Dr. Davis, Giat District Two, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. In court.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together this evening to serve our school district and its people. Allow your wisdom to be upon us as we make the decisions needed to move our system forward. Allow us to always see your beauty, feel your love, know your wisdom, and experience your power. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation of God and the people with which it is just for our own.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Giat?
Here.
Ms. Babin?
Here.
Ms. Portita?
Here.
Ms. Boujou?
Here.
Mr. LaFon?
Here.
Ms. Whale?
Here.
Moving on to item E, we're going to skip that because the representative from Eliac isn't here yet, so we're going to move on to awards and recognition. A special recognition of 2024 LSBA Certified School Board Member Designation. Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am. The following school board members have voluntarily earned 24 more LSBA-approved training hours during the 2024 calendar year. They will be recognized during the LSBA State Convention on February 25th through the 27th for this distinction. They are Ms. Tina Nakam Babin, District Three, 22.75 hours; Ms. Mary Portita, District Four, 33 and one-half hours; Ms. Valerie Boujou, District Six, 39 hours; and Ms. Buffy Lynn Shorpenchak, District Nine, 52 and one-half hours. Please come forward. Christine.
Christine. What's that?
Ms. Tanya Bolton.
All right. Welcome to the awards recognition portion of our board meeting. Each month, we have the privilege of being able to recognize students and staff from throughout the district who are doing exceptional things. We recognize people for academics, we recognize people for sports achievements, and tonight it's a privilege to be able to recognize our arts and those who are doing great things and very talented in music, choir, instrumental, and vocal music. I'm so glad to see so many people that are so talented because I personally did not get that talent. And so, it's a pleasure to be able to recognize everyone here tonight. And so, we're going to go ahead and we're going to get started. Mr. Trent is going to call each of our award winners up. You'll come up and receive your award from Mr. Martin and Ms. Portita. And then the front row, you can just go back to your seat. Our following rows, you'll go out that way, that side of the row. And once you get your certificate, you'll turn toward me, I'll take your picture, and then you'll come back to your seat this way.
And folks that are here, thank you for being here and supporting your kids. Her pictures are going to be uploaded both online and our Facebook page. So if you don't get a great picture from your vantage point, a high-quality photo will be uploaded for your retrieval sometime tomorrow. All right. So the first group we have tonight are the Louisiana American Choir Directors Association All-State Choir Members. They had to submit an audition, a recorded audition, so it wasn't just put your name up. You had to audition and judge and selected for it. And it met back in November at Hilton Riverside in New Orleans. We have several here for that group. So the first one is Samantha from Thibodeau Middle on soprano, Samantha Cruz. From Racine Middle, Finley Guidry. From Central LaFoush, Zoe O'Neil. And there are four choirs that each of these had a chance of being in. Samantha was in the children's choir, the others so far were in the youth tremble choir, and now we're going to the youth mixed choir. From Bayou Blue Middle, Blair Stewart. You still got it out?
Yeah, let me try.
Leanne was in the high school women's choir, as are the last three here. And Jacey O'Neil from Central LaFoush High. So those are all the Louisiana ACBA All-State members. Then, just this past month in January, also at the Hilton Riverside, after a two-step audition, first round at the district level, then so many are allowed from the district around the state to go to the second round of auditions, and they have to submit those, and those are judged by out-of-state judges for the Louisiana Music Educators Association All-State Choir. So first, and for this year, it was the first year moving to New Orleans in November at the Hilton, so we added middle school groups, so there's a middle school band, middle school orchestra, and middle school choir, and jazz band added this year, and string orchestra. So we have some that made the middle school choir in the room here. So we'll start with, from Racine Middle, Finley Guidry. And also from Racine Middle, Shay Landry. And those are for the middle school choir. So the high school has two choirs, a tremble choir and a mixed choir. So in the high school tremble choir, from Central LaFoush, Grace Boudreaux. All right, and also for the middle school choir, from Bayou Blue Middle, Knowledge Capel. All right, and now to the high school mixed choir, which this year, all of the groups were increased this year because of the space and the availability of rooms at the Hilton. So the tremble choir was increased to 100 voices, and the mixed choir was 200 voices, which was amazing. So first, from Central LaFoush High, Leanne Rios. And from South LaFoush High, Elle Hunter. So just to say a couple of things, too, teachers of all of these are what makes this happen. I mean, the kids work hard, we all know that, but I'd like to recognize the teachers of all of these students. Just to let you know, too, if you want to mark your calendars, I know you might have another engagement on April 2nd, but maybe you can get a note to get out of it or something. The Parish Honor Choir concert will be on April 2nd at Central LaFoush. Maybe I could just move the meeting there and do it after the concert. There's a couple more members I wouldn't mind. But anyway, thank you all for doing this for our students and for the state. Yeah, hey, great job, kids. Families, thank you for supporting your kids. I was just having a long conversation today with the band director at Thibodeau High, in fact, about what music means in terms of building student capacity. It's amazing how there's not just a correlation, but likely a causation between the neurological development, between how smart you can get and your involvement in music. So making good decisions, keep making them, and we continue to amaze us. Luckily, none of you got three of those things, or you'd have to stand up and sing rawls. Thank you all so much. Go enjoy a great dinner, and unless you want to see the rest of this board meeting, go ahead and exit stage left. She's going to direct you to the next group.
If y'all don't mind exiting through this door, because we do have another group that's going to come right in.
Look, every month, we invite students here to recognize them for various accomplishments, and tonight, we're thrilled to recognize some accomplishments in the field of music, which is why we have Mr. Trent talking, to introduce what awards and accolades all of these kids received. So we'll go ahead and just start it. Mr. Trent. Yeah, so we have, these are all members of the Louisiana Music Educators Association All-State Groups. Again, like I said earlier, they added middle schools, so we have a middle school band, high school concert band, and high school symphonic band. And also, this year, there was an addition of a handbell ensemble. I don't know anything about handbells, and that's what you see at church sometimes, at big fancy churches, and they have the handbells for Christmas or whatever. And, you know, you see that, but there's actual music for a handbell ensemble. At Lafayette, we have the president of their national organization, and he spearheaded creating... So Louisiana is one of two states that has a state, all-state handbell ensemble now. And we have four of those students, you're going to see them, four of them were from our parish, out of the 20 or so that were in the group. So again, there was a two-step audition, regional level, district level, you have to make it past that with a quota, so many go to the second round, and then they did that, and then they got selected again by out-of-state judges via recorded audition. So we'll get started here first, and I don't know, I can't tell them who's here, and I'll call all the names, and we'll go. Thibodeau Middle on flute, middle school band, Brianna Carden. We give four directions. When your name is called, come on up. On flute, from Sixth Ward Middle, Olivia Benoit. On clarinet, from Bayou Blue Middle, Taylin Lirap. On alto saxophone, from Racine Middle, Abby Sevany. On tenor saxophone, from Bayou Blue Middle, McKenna The Heart. On trumpet, from Monroe's Cut Off Middle, Ava Plazos. On trumpet, from Thibodeau Middle, Colton Barris. On trombone, from Bayou Blue Middle, Racine Walker. On trombone, from Sixth Ward Middle, James McCarty. On percussion, from Thibodeau Middle, Kyle The Barris. On handbells, Central LaFoush High, Lucille Dishman. Also, on handbells, from Central LaFoush High, Kane Richard. And on handbells, from Central LaFoush High, Jack Rodri. Moving on to the high school concert band. From Thibodeau High, Edie Perkel. Clarinet, from Central LaFoush High, Laura Sanchez. Clarinet, from South LaFoush High, Ymir Ramirez. Also on clarinet, from South LaFoush High, Ethan Giroux. And on clarinet, from Central LaFoush High, Lorelei DeHart. On contrabass clarinet, from Central LaFoush High, Kirsty Hernandez. On trumpet, from Central LaFoush High, Landon Grissom. On trombone, from South LaFoush High, Roy Beal. On trombone, from South LaFoush High, Nathan Dean. On tuba, from South LaFoush High, Evan Felaris. And now we're to the high school symphonic band. And on contrabass clarinet, from South LaFoush High, Anna Yeli Guerra. On alto saxophone, from Central LaFoush High, Jane Sherman. On trumpet, from Central LaFoush High, Evan Summody. On trombone, from Central LaFoush High, Sawyer Bro. On percussion, from Central LaFoush High, Brooke Dante. And in the high school full orchestra, on trumpet, from South LaFoush High, Drew Como. On percussion, from Central LaFoush High, Jane Chesso. And on percussion, from Thibodeau High, Ryan Weiss. I was just going to say, one that you can put on your calendar and handmaid without needing to know, in three weeks from tonight, February 26th, at Central LaFoush, at 6 o'clock, will be the Parish Honor Band Concert. There'll be four groups, all youth, sixth and seventh graders, eighth and ninth graders in junior high, and there are two senior high groups, the symphonic band and an ensemble which consists of most of these high school students, or all of these that were in here. Just very fine event to go to, you won't regret it. And just to say, I know I've said this years ago with a couple of numbers, in 2005 and '06, in this parish, there were about seven students that made all district band, no All-Staters. So in 15 years, we've gone from that, with the commitment this parish has made, Dr. Matthews, and Mr. Martin continuing the support, and all of you continuing the support, and now we have over 60 All-Staters. Without the support, that wouldn't happen, and I'm just here in the middle, I'm the messenger, and they work really hard, but can all the teachers be recognized? Stand up, or put your hand up. It doesn't happen without great teachers, those of you who don't know that. So it starts right there, and we have the greatest music faculty everywhere. Yeah, and thank you for what you've done, Mr. Trent. A lot of applause for what he's done. Just a personal story, because I want to embarrass my son and how hard it is to be where these kids are right now. He attempted to be in this group, and a whole bunch of kids tried, right, and they all tried. He goes to compete against this with the trumpet player, right, and he's practicing, 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 all I hear is a silly, silly song over and over and over. It drives him crazy, right? Finally gets to the performance, says, "How'd you do?" He's like, "I messed up a little bit, but I think it might be okay." And I'm like, "Are you sure?" He's like, "Yeah, no, definitely not, because I heard Evan Summody play it." And he slayed it, so. I wanted to share it, not because I wanted to pick up my son, even though that's a little bit of... Okay, this is a really, this is a really challenging thing to be recognized at this level. So we take for granted how easy it is, because it's so common here, to his point. It is not common. It's uniquely LaFoush Parish music problem to have to do this in three directions tonight, right? So we don't take that for granted, and it doesn't have to be supported by the parents. So thank you for what you're doing. You've got a lot of choices, and we know that, and we're glad that you choose us for your kids' education, so, thank you for what you do, enjoy the rest of your night, we have an exciting board meeting if you want to stick around. I have one thing to add, when you have kids that aren't making it, and they're, he's talking about a ninth grader, so, consider All-State is ninth through twelfth grade, the high school, that's a four-year band. There shouldn't be many ninth graders making it, if the teachers are doing their job, they're taking kids where they come in ninth grade and coaching them, teaching them, and getting them, so, it's gonna be mostly upper class, so tell them to don't give up. Yeah, yeah. He was in ninth grade and, you know. I'm a really good pep talker, he'd be amazing. But anyways, you know. That's the, that's the reality of the situation, so, thank you. Thank you, folks.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to move that we revisit item E in the first section of opening meeting, so move.
Yeah, in a second, Ms. Babin, all in favor, we'll do a handle, all in favor? Motion carries, if you move back up to item E, LaFouche Education Foundation update, Ms. Deanna LaFoma.
Hi, I'm speaking on the mic, I'm speaking right here.
Okay, speaking right here, alright.
Great to be with everybody, I am very casually dressed like I'm going to a parade because our King Cake Fest merch is coming in, isn't it exciting? So, I wanted to, I wanted to show it off, so I decided to put on my parade boots and talk to you guys in a t-shirt. Thank you guys for having me today, um, before I pass this out real quick, what I'm handing out to you guys is the impact report from last year's festival. If y'all didn't know, thank you, thank you, Ms. Martin, if y'all didn't know, Louisiana King Cake Fest is happening soon, late next Saturday, and we are in full-blown festival mode in the LaFon House, and the LaFon children, and the LaFon husband, and everybody associated with me is in very much King Cake mode. So, um, just to go over what you guys have in front of you, last year, um, the festival was hugely successful, so, you know, we started this two years ago, um, our first year, we had thirty-five hundred people that showed up, and we were frankly amazed because we were expecting, you know, maybe a thousand, the downtown Tibbetto was busting at the seams, so, we did a little reprioritization and changed the footprint and, um, did some logistical things, and was able to have a really, really good experience last year, so, just kind of by the numbers, we were twice the size that we were last year, um, you know, I'm not gonna read this all, you guys can understand it, but the, the true thing to focus on is that bottom quarter, that, you know, we raised eighty thousand dollars. And with that money, we've been able to do some really cool things for the teachers in the parish that we haven't been able to do in a really long time. So, um, last year, uh, not last year, last week, um, we gave out forty thousand dollars worth of innovation and education grants to teachers across the parish, um, I think we had seventeen or twenty, I'm sorry, I should have looked that number up before we came in, but several teachers received those grants. We had thirty new teachers that got two hundred and fifty dollar supply grants at the beginning of the year, so, basically, the qualification for that is if you're a new teacher in LaFouche Parish, and you fill out the Google form, and you send it to us, and, you know, LaFouche Parish School District HR checks out that you really teach here, you get a supply grant voucher that you can use either item supply or holiday office supply. Um, that's been a hugely successful program, three years in the running, if you notice, that coincides with King Cake Festival, we had the revenue to be able to do that. You know, last year after the festival, we bought a room and paper for every, every teacher in the parish, which sounds like it's, you know, it was a cool thing to do, but when I actually like put the numbers for that, like, that was a kind of, that was a big investment, you know, I think it cost about six thousand dollars to buy a room and paper for every teacher in the parish. We bought Amazon wishlist items for, I think, close to three hundred teachers, um, at the beginning of the year, so, it's, it's been, it's been truly a blessing to watch this festival grow, and to be able to take the proceeds and do what's really core to our mission. Another piece of this, you know, LaFouche Education Foundation is the provider of the Dolly Parte Imagination Library for LaFouche Parish. The Dolly Parte Imagination Library provides a free, high-quality book mailed to your home if you are age zero to five. It is a wonderful program, it is a great program, it, it helps improve childhood literacy, it's super awesome, it is not free to the organization that runs the program. So, um, you know, prior to the King Cake Festival, when we were trying to reassess our priorities and how we could do all the cool things we wanted to do, we actually thought about trying to get rid of the program because we couldn't afford it, and, you know, with the success of the library, we've been able to recommit to it. So, I think last month, we had the second highest enrollment in the state in LaFouche Parish in the program. So, long story short, um, the festival is awesome, it's coming, it takes a ton of work, um, but it's, it's been really rewarding to be able to kind of take that, these proceeds, and do, do what, do what the foundation was here for. So, King Cake Fest, next week, downtown Tibbetto, it starts at ten o'clock with a children's wagon parade, so, three-block wagon parade, super cute, um, we have some school dance teams that are walking in it, we have mastheads, um, the kids from High Five just told us they were gonna walk in and pull a float, so, really a good community then to kick off the festival. The festival actually starts at eleven o'clock, um, we have a second line that we have invited all of the royalty in LaFouche Parish, the party girl royalty to second line up to the stage, um, we do a toast, we kick off Marty Girl in LaFouche Parish, and then it starts, right, so, we have two bands, um, Not New in the Wild, Matuse is our opening band, and then, or Matu, I probably said that wrong, um, Not New in the Wild, Matu, man, other guy is too long for that. And then, uh, the Waters Edge Band is gonna be our closeout. Um, we have right about forty vendors signed up, still comparable to where we were last year, um, ticket sales are going great, sponsorship's been wonderful, so, um, it takes a lot of volunteers, so, you know, if anybody feels like they want to volunteer, we have sign up on our website. We really worked with, tried to work with teacher engagement this year, so, Casey Sherman, who's the principal at Raceland, is kind of cutting that up for us, so, we've seen a lot more teacher engagement this year and volunteerism because we've kind of put more of the focus on it and not just shotpinned it out. Ms. Marion runs our coloring contest, so while we're talking about great art and, art and musical talent that we have in our parish, so, this is our festival poster that was designed by a student at South LaFouche, isn't it beautiful? Ms. Marion, I'm gonna leave this with you because it's gonna go in your frame to, on top of the poster for my sister. I'm gonna give it to Crystal, and she's gonna fix it for me.
Follow the directions around.
Yes, I'll give it to Crystal, so, um, we have the poster displayed in several places throughout the parish, one will be displayed in the governor's office, one will be displayed at Tibbetto Regional because they are the sponsor of this coloring contest, well, poster and coloring contest. The school that wins gets a framed copy, the student will get a framed copy, and then something new that we're doing this year, we're actually gonna sell the poster, so we're gonna give the student a two hundred dollar check, right, and we'll sell twenty posters at the festival and see, you know, what happens, maybe, maybe people will want more and we'll make more money in the end. So, um, we're really excited, lots of changes, uh, the festival's growing, we're trying to manage the growth the best we can, we're trying to make sure it's a true family-friendly experience, we have a kids' zone, um, there'll be the big crazy phone party again, or the wedding zoo, um, we have a cake walk, Dolly's Imagination cake walk, um, so, I hope that we can all see y'all out there, did I leave anything out, Ms. Marion?
I think I did, it is.
Would y'all all try to get original?
I guess we could, um, we, we've never really been set up for an auction, and that's one of the things that we probably need to figure out if we want to start doing, but that would be a cool idea. A raffle.
It's lots of fun, you can buy your tickets online, and, um, VIP tickets are really good, because you have your special place where you can congregate, but the regular tickets are good, too, you get to vote for the best king cake.
Right, so, thank you for helping me out with that, so, um, it's ten dollars to get in, and with your ten dollars, you get five tastings, you'll get a bracelet that has five little tabs on it, and with those tabs, you can taste five king cakes. So, if you want to try out party king cakes, you definitely can, a tasting ticket's a dollar, and you can, you know, sample that way, um, you find your favorite cake and you vote for it, um, there's two different paths to winning the King Cake Fest, the overall winner will be people's choice, so, we pick up the bases with the wooden nickels in it, we count them, whoever has the most wins the King Cake Fest. Based on some feedback from our vendors, they wanted more opportunities, so we have categories this year, um, so they were able to self-select if they wanted to be in traditional, savory, filled, or unique, um, we have a panel of judges that will judge them, and so we'll have winners in those categories as well.
How do you pick your judges?
It's always the right person who may be able to work something out. And this, look, this event, it, it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of volunteers, and the support of this community's been amazing, I mean, Lorio Foundation has been probably one of our biggest supporters from the beginning, they, they stepped up and heavily supported us with thirty thousand dollar investment this year, which is just amazing, and it's allowed us to make some investments in the festival, so when you come this year, you'll notice that all the tents match, and it looks, it looks really cool, and that's, um, a lot of what we're able to do with Lorio's investment. So, our sponsors are all listed, we do still have sponsorship availability if anybody wants to, they start at three hundred dollars, super affordable, your logo gets to get up in the festival, um, you get two VIP tickets, thank you Uncle Henry for sponsoring, um, and, uh, it's just, we hope to see everyone out there, pray for good weather, I think that's it again, our stickers I'll leave on the table, our posters I'll leave on the table, all of the schools should be getting yard signs, calling in mail tomorrow. Thank y'all.
Alright, we're going to item three, approval of minutes of observances and proclamations, eight minutes of the regulars' board meeting held Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five. That's motion, Mrs. Sharpenj, second, Ms. Bouchois, please vote. Yeah, I'm sorry, is there any participate, any questions or participation from the audience, any board questions, if not, let's move on. Motion carries. Item B, observations in schools, National School Social Workers Week, March the third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, Louisiana School Lunch Week, and National School Breakfast Week, March the third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, and Employee Appreciation Day, March the seventh, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion, and Dr. Guyat, second, Ms. Babin, is there any comment from the audit, from the public, any board questions or comments, not please vote. Motion carries. Item four, memorial resolution, Ms. Ashant, Mrs. Ashantiana Smith, and that's me, Mrs. Ashantiana Smith was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August fifth nineteen, excuse me, twenty twenty-four, as a social worker at pupil appraisal center. Ms. Smith passed away on December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, although Ashant was the dish, for the district for a short time, her positive impact on student support services will always be remembered. Item B, Ms. Patrice Hidalgo, Ms. Babin.
Ms. Patrice Hidalgo was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on January nineteenth, nineteen seventy-seven, as a teacher at Total High School. Ms. Hidalgo retired on May twenty-ninth, twenty twelve, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-four point five years. Madam President, if I may.
Sure.
First, I would like to thank you and the board for allowing me to read Ms. Hidalgo's memorial resolution. She was not a constituent of mine, but she was a very important part of my high school experience, and others in this very room. Ms. Hidalgo became a permanent fixture on the THS tennis courts and taught many students, myself included, the love of the game, and although we may have seen those afternoon practices as often running or chasing around a little green ball, she was patient and quietly, patiently and quietly teaching us a lot about life as well. You see, Coach Hidalgo led by example, her calm, quiet, and stoic presence was to be admired. In the three years that I had the opportunity to be a part of the team, I don't remember her yelling at us or pointing out our shortcomings, she focused on teachable moments and constructive feedback. She modeled how to be calm, confident, and not to buckle under pressure. Also, she never meddled in situations outside of the courts, but she did occasionally offer words of wisdom if she saw fit. She was fair and consistent and kind, and she encouraged us to be so as well. She spoke of respect, she spoke of respecting the game, respecting our opponent, and most importantly, respecting ourselves. She encouraged us to work together and help build each other up with a sense of family, resulting in friendships that in many cases still remain today. I will forever be grateful for the opportunities and learning that took place after the school bails on those courts. May she rest in peace, leaving the world a legacy of serenity and harmony dressed in purple and gold.
Madam President, I'd also like to say Ms. Hidalgo played a significant part in working with the, um, human performance education majors, which would be the PE majors, uh, she precepted many, just in the time that I, I transitioned to teacher education, I know she was actively involved even before my time, so, uh, she definitely leaves a legacy of up and coming, and she was always open to, to play that role for us, uh, in a local setting, meaning obviously in LaFouche Parish, so, I would like to say that she, she would definitely be remembered for that effort of supporting nickel state teacher education students.
Item C, Mr. Glenn DeRoche, that would be me, retired school bus driver. Mr. Glenn DeRoche was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on January the first, nineteen sixty-five, as a bus driver. Mr. DeRoche retired on January fifteenth, nineteen ninety, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-five years. Mr. DeRoche also served one term as a school board member from January the first, nineteen ninety-one, to December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-four. Item D, Ms. Goldie Lejeune, retired teacher, Mr. Wright.
Ms. Goldie Lejeune was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August thirty-first, nineteen sixty-five, as a teacher at LaRose Cut Off High School. Ms. Lejeune also taught at LaRose Upper Elementary School and East Tibbetto Junior High Schools. She retired on September eleventh, nineteen eighty-one, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of sixteen years.
Item E, Ms. Susan LaRose, retired paraprofessional, Ms. Babin.
Ms. Susan LaRose was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on November fourth, nineteen eighty-eight, as a paraprofessional at WS LaFog Elementary School. Ms. LaRose retired on December twenty-first, twenty thirteen, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-five years.
Yes, I've had the privilege and honor of teaching with Ms. LaRose at WS LaFog when I was the assistant principal there, um, always a big smile, loved the children, um, I know she will be missed.
And we were personal friends, and, um, and been knowing for a very long time, um, kind, kind person, very friendly.
Item F, Ms. Kim Boudreaux, retired teacher, Mr. Duplantis.
Ms. Kim Boudreaux was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August fifth, twenty twenty-nine, as a teacher at Valuable Middle School. Ms. Boudreaux retired on July twenty-third, twenty twenty, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of eleven years.
Item G, Ms. Rosalie Noblock, retired media specialist, and that would be Ms. Boudreaux. And that would be Ms. Bouchois.
Ms. Rosalie Noblock was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on January twenty-third, nineteen sixty-one, as a media specialist at St. Charles Elementary School. She served as a media specialist and teacher at several schools throughout LaFouche Parish, including Golden Meadow High School, Golden Meadow Upper Elementary, Galliano Junior High School, Lockport Upper Elementary School, Graceland Junior High School, Graceland High School and St. Charles Elementary School. Ms. Noblock retired on January nineteenth, nineteen ninety-three, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-two years. And I have to say that even though she retired, she was still in the education arena. She, in fact, she was a substitute for me for many years and, um, the children used to call her Mont Rosie. They loved her. Uh, she was very active in her community, in her church. I know she will be a great, it is a great loss to the community as well as her family and her son and daughter are here in the back and, uh, our sincere condolences to you. She was a very fine woman, she was.
Item H, Ms. Ray Ella Angellette, retired paraprofessional, Ms. Wells.
Ms. Ray Ella Angellette was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on September twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-three, as a paraprofessional at Galliano Elementary School. She also served as a paraprofessional at Golden Meadow Middle School. Ms. Angellette retired on January twenty-third, two thousand six, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirteen years.
Item I, Ms. Joyce Day, retired teacher, Ms. Patton.
Ms. Joyce Day was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on January twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-two, as a teacher at Timberland Elementary School. Ms. Day also taught at South Timberland Elementary School and WS LaFaw Elementary School. She retired on February first, two thousand two, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty years.
And, uh, I had the opportunity to teach with Ms. Day. In fact, her husband was the principal at the time she was a teacher. But she was a very, very kind person, a very good teacher and, um, I know her family will miss her.
Madam President, I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of the resolutions be recorded on a special page in our minute book.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and that a copy will be recorded on a special page of our minute book. Item five, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And that would be Ms. Du Planis.
Thank you, Madam President. A, to accept the renewal quotes from formal growth in column four with a total proposed premium of three hundred fifty-five thousand eighty-three dollars and to reject uninsured motorists, reject terrorism coverage and to authorize the superintendent to sign all documents related to the renewal. So moved.
Do you have a second, Dr. Giott? Uh, any public comment? Any board comment? And this was well discussed at the, um, meeting that Ms. Bro attended at, at the committee meeting. If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item B, to authorize advertisement for proposals for emergency or disaster-related environmental services as asbestos mold and lead and take appropriate action.
So moved.
Oh, I am so sorry. I just jumped right in there with the plan. That's not the recommendation though. You have to read the recommendation, I'm sorry.
To authorize advertisement for proposals for emergency or disaster-related environmental services includes asbestos, asbestos mold and lead and take appropriate action, so moved.
Thank you. And seconded by Dr. Giott, any, uh, public comment? Any board comment or questions? If not, please vote. Motion carries. I got sidetracked because I did not realize it might Noblock, this was Rosalie's son. I didn't want you to hear me, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's right. Item C, to award the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, C and B computers for refurbished desktops and laptop computers, so moved.
Seconded, um, Ms. Patton, oh, Ms. Patton, um, any comment from the public? Any board comment or questions? Please vote. Motion carries. Item D.
Item D, to authorize the advertisement for bids on small equipment and large equipment needed by the child nutrition department throughout the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as the need arises in compliance with current bid laws, so moved.
Uh, Mr. Wright, seconded. Any, uh, uh, any public comment? Any board comment or questions? Please vote. Motion carries. Item E.
Item E, to authorize advertisement for bids on the following items needed by the child nutrition department throughout the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as need arises in compliance with regulations by the State Department of Education. A, milk and milk products. B, bread. C, all other food items. D, genitorial and paper products. C, cleaning of grease traps. F, concentrated detergents. So moved.
Second by Ms. Charper-Jay. Any, uh, public comment? Any board comment? Please vote. Motion carries. Item F.
Item F, to extend the existing contract with Transformix for E-rate CAT II products and services for Aruba Central, transceivers and switches through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in accordance with the terms outlined within the original RFP awarded through the Finance Committee on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any other comment? Any board questions, comments? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item G.
Item G, to extend the existing contract with Transformix for E-rate MIBS CAT II products and services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in accordance with the terms outlined in the original RFP awarded through the Finance Committee on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, so moved.
Have a second. Uh, Mr. LaFont, any public comment? Any board comment, discussion? Please vote. Motion carries. Moving on to item six, approval of landed facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. LaFont.
Thank you, Madam President. To accept the change order request in a sum of forty-six thousand two hundred eleven dollars, ninety-four cents and add twenty-three days at St. Charles Elementary School Classroom Edition Project, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bouchois. Any public comment? Any board comment, discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item B.
To renew a three-year lease with Vow Virtual Academy of LaFouche for the rental of building number seven at Graceland Middle School, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Charper-Jay. Uh, any public comment? Any board comment or discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item D. Oh, excuse me, C.
To approve a request from DTB Track Club to waive the fees for the use of the stadium, track and field at Salafouche High School, the quester would be responsible for the three hundred dollar damage deposit and the custodian fee. So moved.
Second, um, Ms. Patton. Any public comment? Any board comment, questions? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Now to D.
To approve a request from Diamond Elite Volleyball to waive the fees for the use of the gym at Golden Meadow Middle School for a three-year period through twenty twenty-seven, the quester would be responsible for the three hundred dollar damage deposit and custodial fees. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any comment from the public? Board comment?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm in receipt of an email from Ms. Tammy Morton, who's the coach of Diamond Elite Volleyball. She's also a teacher at Golden Meadow Middle School. She had a, uh, significant conflict this evening, would have liked to attend. Um, she's finally getting into her home after Hurricane Ida. And so I told her that was completely understood and I, I appreciate her communicating that to us. But she, from what I understand, has everything in order. She didn't come to the committee meeting.
Yes, and we have all the information we need. Thank you for that. Um, if not, let's both leave if there's no other question. Motion carries. Item F.
To authorize advertisement for proposals for facility condition assessment services. So moved.
Second, uh, Dr. Giott. Any public comment? Any board comment or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I said the second committee being, uh, over it. It's so nice to us to have the opportunity to be proactive with our students instead of always being reactive. So this is a great thing, I'm glad we're doing this.
Yes, and it's so, so true. All right, any other comments? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item D.
To accept the change order request in the credit sum of three thousand four hundred dollars for installation of unit work in the sea hall and field house for the Salafouche High School project, so moved.
Moved by Mr. LaFont, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board comment or questions? Please vote. Motion carries. Item G.
To accept a change order request for hurricane Ida repairs in the credit sum of nine thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents to the contract to remove canopy repainting at Central LaFouche High School project. So moved.
So moved. And seconded by, um, Ms. Charper-Jay. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, please vote. Motion carries. And item H.
To accept a change order request for hurricane Ida repairs in the credit sum of six thousand nine hundred seven dollars and sixty-seven cents to the contract to omit the replacement of the rear canopy for the tin various sites project at a child nutrition building, so moved.
Seconded by Mr. LaFont, seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board question or comments? If not, please vote.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. LaFont. Um, moving on to, um, new business and we will let Dr. Giott.
Item A, to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic calendar, so moved.
Seconded by Ms. Patton. Uh, any public comment? And if not, let's turn around to Mr. Philson and then we can ask a comment.
Superintendent Martin, President Pataida, under the board each year, school districts must adopt a school calendar for the upcoming school year. The state law mandates a school calendar that must feature a minimum of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty minutes of instructional time for students. This equates to a minimum of three hundred and sixty minutes per day. It also mandates a hundred and eighty-two working days for teachers. If you would refer to our proposed calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, you will see that it features sixty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-five minutes of instructional time at three hundred and seventy-five minutes per day, which is well above the minimum instructional minutes required. This allows us to fill five days of emergency time so that if schools have to close due to emergency situations, we would not have to make up the days. Please be aware that in the event of school closures beyond the five days, holidays could be eliminated at the discretion of the superintendent to meet the minimum number of instructional days. Professional days will once again consist of whole days. There will be a total of five professional days beginning on Friday, August first, Monday, August fourth, Tuesday, August fifth, Tuesday, September second and Tuesday, October fourteenth. The calendar also features two teacher record day, records days, one on Wednesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-five and one on Friday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-six. With this total, our teachers will have to mandate one hundred and eighty-two working days. Students' first day of school will be on Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-five and the last day of school will be on Thursday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-six. The holiday schedule is coated in pink. Finally, the calendar has been approved by our superintendent and reviewed by our supervisory committee and I present it to you for adoption for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Do we have any, um, comments? It looks good. Thank you very much, Mr. Philson. If not, please vote. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, tentative dates of future meetings. A, committee meetings, pol- pol- excuse me, Policy and Academics Committee, Business Committee and Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, February twentieth, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and the regular school board meeting on Wednesday, March the twelfth, twenty twenty-five. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned. And the board members are going to take the picture. Use my face.